I'd like to welcome everybody to the Southbridge Town Council meeting, Monday, January 22nd, 2024, 7:00 PM, McKinnon Council Chamber. The agenda, Agenda Item Number One, Pledge of Allegiance.
(inaudible) United States of America, and to liberate all with which expands one nation under God, indivisible, for liberty and justice for all.
Madam Secretary, Agenda Item Number Two, Roll Call.
Counselor Adams.
Present.
Counselor Shenyer.
Present.
Counselor Daniel.
Present.
Counselor Dow.
Present.
Counselor Lazo.
Present.
Counselor Marquetti.
Present.
Counselor Montigny.
Present.
Counselor Ortiz.
He's gonna be a few minutes late.
Okay, and Counselor Rivas.
She's gonna be a few minutes late also.
Okay, thank you.
Moving on to Number Three, Consider and Accept the Town Council Meeting Minutes, Monday, December 4th, 2023. At this time, I'd entertain a motion to postpone the minutes till the meeting of the February 12th, 2024.
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Second.
Motion by Shenyer, second by Montigny. Just an overview, I mean, to the Town Manager.
Yeah, thank you. As you know, we're in transition. I know I said this at the last meeting, we were finally able to schedule a meeting with Sue and Sharon so that they could review processes and the minutes and how to flow them. And so, and I was away for the conference, so we were unable to get that all completed before we could have this meeting. So it's our oversight, but by the next meeting, we should be in a regular flow and make sure that everything's up to date. I beg your indulgence on this as we transition.
Thank you, Town Manager. Any further discussion? If not, all in favor, opposed, postponed till the 24th, February 12th, 2024. Moving on to Subcommittee Reports, Department of Public Works.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, through you. We had a meeting just this evening. Agenda Items Number 10 through 12, 22, and 33 through 35 are on tonight's agenda. Thank you.
Moving on to Education Services, Counselor Rivas has not arrived yet. Moving on to General Government, Counselor Montigny.
Thank you, there's no meeting scheduled.
Moving on to D, Planning and Development, Counselor Daniels.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, through you. We had a meeting on Tuesday, January 16th. Agenda Items 13, 14, 15, 19, 20, 21, and 23 were all discussed and all were approved unanimously. That's all.
Moving on to Protections of Person and Property, Counselor Shenyer.
Mr. Chairman, we had a meeting on January 17th in the Veterans Room, and all items related to the fire and police, public safety was unanimously approved by all those present.
Thank you, Counselor Shenyer. Moving on to Chairman's Announcements, Number Five. I've got a couple items. Number One, I'd just like to announce that the co-chair of the Town Manager's Evaluation will be Counselor Adams and Counselor Montigny. They'll be putting together a format similar to last year. I know that the Town Manager has not been on for a full year, so there are certain issues that we're gonna be working on. I know that we're doing a lot of reorganization and some movement of reforming some of our departments. So Counselor Adams and Counselor Montigny will be working on that. Moving on to the Dog Kennel. We had our first Dog Kennel meeting to build a new dog kennel for the town of Southbridge. Right now, we're paying quite a bit of money to Oxford for, to take care of our dogs, or our animals, I should say, and we also have to travel to Oxford when we do this. It doesn't seem to be cost-effective. We are moving forward. There's a tremendous amount of money that's been donated towards the kennel, and we're also gonna continue to work with Friends of the Kennel. We're looking at relocating it, looking at a couple different parcels. Right now, the Town Manager is contacting the engineer that worked on the first set of prints to see some of the cost factors of redesigning it for certain sites and maybe come in and look at the sites and see if they're viable. There's two right now. We'll be talking about that in the future. I'd like to move on to another subject. We have an election coming up on February 6th. I'd like to do a little history here. We have a special election. Couple, few decades ago, there was a man named Jack Fallon, who was our state representative in Southbridge. He preserved and put forth the money with the Speaker of the House, McGee, to extend the Podunk Pike into Southbridge as a north-south corridor. The money was approved, it was put aside, it was supposed to be part of our economic development of Southbridge, road access. The gentleman lost an election as state representative, and we never got the road from the Podunk Pike extension into the town of Southbridge. That's just to show you how important it is to have a representative from your town. Going forward, we have an election on February 6th. We have a local candidate that's gonna be running for state representative, and we have a gentleman from another town that's running. I'm sure he's a fine gentleman.
Point of order.
State your point of order.
There's no campaigning at Town Council meetings, it's a public meeting, and you cannot use public resources to campaign. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. I do not rule in favor of that. I want to go on to just say, as the Chairman of this Southbridge Town Council, and we've started, along with you, the people, in the last election, a Southbridge-first agenda. To worry about Southbridge first, our roads, our police department, our fire department, our new fire station, we are working diligently, this council, its department heads, on a Southbridge-first agenda. There's a piece of the puzzle missing. It's called legislators, whether it be the senator, the representative, the congressman. These are the gentlemen that go to Boston and go to Washington and bring home the bacon to help you pay for your fire station, so we don't raise your taxes, to help you pay for the sewer and water improvements, roads, sidewalks. We sit up here and we debate and argue over expenditures in our budget, because we only have so many tax dollars that we have to deal with, with the two-and-a-half cap on the tax rate. So going forward, when we turn around and say, "We're gonna replace two bridges on Mill Street," and they have to come out of the road funds that we have, then all of a sudden, because of great employees, such as our economic development people, our Planning and Development Subcommittee, our counselors, we have those bridges being paid for by state and federal funds, because Southbridge comes first. In closing, as Chairman of the Southbridge Town Council, I fully endorse, and I urge everybody, to vote for their local candidate, that would be Dave Adams, and I thank you very much for being patient, for listening to this. Moving on, I would like to move on to Town Manager's announcements. Town Manager.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just a few things. First off, the last regular Town Council meeting, Town Council voted to open the electric aggregation plan comment period. We have posted that on our website, it's right in the news page, on the front page, as to the ability to go look at that plan, and if you have any questions and comments on that plan, we urge you to take a look at it and submit any comments. We will have a public hearing scheduled in February regarding that comment period. Last week, we held the Curbside Enterprise Fund, or the Solid Waste Enterprise Fund meeting, to set the rate. That rate has been set by the council at $115 per quarter. Just as a side, as we discussed, we talked about different providers out there that provide collection in regards to our solid waste. Interestingly enough, when I was getting a haircut over the weekend, spoke to a young lady that was my hairstylist, she lives in Dudley, they had just raised their rent rate to $182 per quarter, so our rate of 115, while it is sticker shock because it's something we never had to pay for, we did work very hard. We also placed that on our website, it's right on the first page, so I urge anybody to go and look at that. It'll give you information on the rate, next steps. Anna Smith, Maritza, and my team have been working diligently to get as much information together, they're working with Casella, Casella has the educational piece, Anna has been working closely with that, more information will become forthcoming. We have pushed that information also out to our Facebook page as well. The curbside will actually go out tomorrow, because we did post a letter earlier today relative to the fire station and fire station funding, so we are using our website more aggressively to get information out. We're also using our social media presence as well. Regrettably, our Opera Administrator, Abigail, tendered her resignation. We had many conversations with her over the last week or so to try to retain that employee, however, she is moving on due to the fact that she relocated to Springfield, and the commute was not gonna work in her favor. Dean Yakabuchi, Michelle, and I had met today, we talked, and Christine, our accountant, had talked about different scenarios, and we're working up a plan of action to cover that office and move forward. Mr. Yakabuchi started last week, his one week in office has proved invaluable, and we look forward to bringing that information to you. With that, we have also started the budget process, all budgets were due by the end of this week, and we are working on reconciling those accounts. We have a meeting scheduled tomorrow with Lori Del Olio, who we brought in to help close up the fiscal year '23. She'll be meeting with Dean, myself, and my financial team to discuss the status of that, see where we're at in setting free cash for the upcoming year, so that we can make good budgetary decisions. Over the weekend, I had the opportunity to attend the Mass Municipal Association Conference and Trade Show, along with Counselor Shenyer and Counselor Daniel. Also in attendance was Ms. Dean, and Michelle, and Nor, our Human Resources Director. It's a great opportunity for us to meet different individuals. We did, I did spend a lot of time, along with Ms. Hill, with our auditor, to discuss the upcoming audit season, so a lot of good information. Oh, Counselor Rivas was there as well. I apologize, Counselor Rivas. That's right, you were there with us. My apologies, that was a slight oversight. I think it was a good opportunity, I'm sure they're gonna comment on the activities, and the information that was provided from the governor, as far as different potential revenue sources, I'm just gonna say, from a municipal standpoint, while some of those empowerment, they're just shifting the ability for making us, as communities, have local options to increase taxes, as opposed to the state finding those sources, but I'll leave that to the elected leaders to talk more about that. And finally, on Thursday, several counselors, I hope everybody can attend, the American Optical Historic Designation. That's a great opportunity, it's a national historic designation for that property, on the whole American Optical property. Congressman Nail will be there, so hopefully we'll be able to speak to him, not only on the historic designation, but on other factors that affect our community. And that is all I have this evening, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you very much. Moving on to Agenda Item Number Seven, Citizens Forum. Are there any citizens that would like to address the council at this time, on any issues that are not on the agenda?
Hello, Maddie Bondius, 947 Edison Drive, Town Clerk. I just wanted to let everybody know that the last day to register to vote or to change your party enrollment for the upcoming special state primary is this Saturday, January 27th. Town Clerk's office will be open at that time from 9 to 5. Also, I just wanna let the residents know that the town census has gone out, and we ask that you please return them, so that there's no problems with your voter registration for this upcoming, very busy election year. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other citizens at this time? State your name and address.
Michael Murray, Lynn Lane. Long time.
Welcome, Mike.
Hello, Counselors, Town Manager. It should come as no surprise that we are living in very challenging times, unprecedented times, and very much expensive times. I think we all know someone struggling to get by, possibly one missed paycheck from joining the growing homeless population in town. We see people making decisions between medication and food, and making other tough financial decisions to meet these unprecedented changes. The town of Southbridge is also seeing these challenges too. For example, the $4 million inflation cost to build a new fire station that put it on hold, and other state funding cuts, like the $12,500 from the demolition portion of that very project. With the state receiving less revenue collections from people leaving the state, with the state excessive cost of housing migrants that will only compound in growth, there is no end in sight due to both federal and state policies. This is a financial doomsday formula. It's sure to bring tough times ahead for the towns like Southbridge, which rely heavily on local aid. Further, to what I think the Town Manager was alluding to, the 1% increase in lodging tax, the 25% increase in mill's tax, and worse, a 5% increase on motor vehicle excise surcharges, all hurts communities and makes our state and Southbridge less affordable. All this said, my challenge for Team Southbridge, which includes the Town Counselor, the Town Manager, and all department heads, is to tighten their belts too, to start prioritizing our town's biggest needs over everyday items. Rather than playing the question of when the budgeting process to your review spending, I'm asking you to freeze all transfers of funds from now to the end of the year. Let's end this "use it or lose it" practice of department funding that creates next year's level funding. Historically, in Southbridge, people may be surprised, that's a significant amount of money. That's about a million dollars in transfers from January 1st to the end of the year. In other words, one-quarter of the increase of a fire station building increase cost. Counsel, ask yourself this question, which is the bigger savings? Buying the supplies for next year, like paper, or saving inflation on a new fire station? Again, what is our biggest needs, and how can you save the taxpayers' money in meeting those needs? Naturally, in freezing transfers, there'll be emergencies, and there'll be unexpected bills to pay. However, in limiting each proposed critical transfer, how much leaner can Southbridge run? How much better can our department heads manage their department budgets, rather than with historical level funding requests? If you didn't have the money for it in the budgeting process, why do you think there's money for it now? Businesses freeze spending in tough times to save money. I think if Southbridge tries this, it might be eye-opening to counselors and add greater confidence to taxpayers that their money is being managed efficiently. It would increase transparency and give Southbridge a step up on next year's budget request to soon come your way. For these and so many challenging challenges of taxpayers in today's world, I'm requesting Southbridge consider freezing all transfers of funds, of course with the exception of critical spending, until the end of the year. Let's see how much of that $1 million historically transferred this figure can save for taxpayers. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you. Any other citizens that would like to address the Town Council of any issue that is not on the agenda? If not, we'll move on to Agenda Item Number Eight, Presentations. We have presentations tonight, the Town Council Proclamations from Counselor Rivas and Chairman Lazo. At this time, I'd like everybody to know, I'm relinquishing the presentations to the Chairman of Education Human Services, and I want you to know that she made provisions in the creation of it by the front office. She did a fantastic job. You're on, Counselor Rivas.
I see a lot of familiar faces from back in November. So these proclamations that we wanted to present to some of our students here in Southbridge, and share a little bit of the celebration that happened in November, through Quinn Sigman Community Colleges, Hispanics, Hispanic celebrating excellence scholarship awards, that these five students were nominated and received awards with their families present, some of their families present, back in November at this event. But we really wanted to recognize our students here at the Town Council, and make sure that everyone out there congratulates them and celebrates their accomplishments. These are really important awards and scholarships that many students in Worcester, you know, are celebrated for, and QCC extends that to our students here in Southbridge, and we wanted to recognize them tonight and give them these personal proclamations from the Town Council. So the first student, I will be giving a proclamation to, Daniel Castillo, resident of the town of Southbridge and student at Southbridge High School, receiving the Quinn Sigman Community College's Hispanics Achieving and Celebrating Excellence Scholarship Award. Daniel was nominated for an, he received an assay award in the, that are in the arts, academics, athletics, and community service, leadership, and civic political engagement. So Daniel, please come up and receive your award, your proclamation. Ask if he wanted to say anything, but he doesn't. Congratulations, and we congratulate your family for all of their support in your endeavors, and we wish you that continued good luck in all of your future plans. So thank you. Our next student, Edwin de la Cruz Davila, resident of the town of Southbridge and student at Bay Path Regional Vocational High School, received Quinn Sigman Communities Colleges Hispanics Achieving and Celebrating Excellence Scholarship Awards for his leadership. So Edwin, if you wanna come up. No one's taking me up on saying anything, all right? And congratulations to your family for all of their support. We are really proud of all of our students here in Southbridge, and we just wanna celebrate all of you. The following student, Christian Ortiz Torres, resident of the town of Southbridge and student at Southbridge High School, also received Quinn Sigman Community Colleges Hispanics Achieving and Celebrating Excellence Scholarship Award. Also for leadership. Christian?
All right. (laughing). I won't say much, but I just wanna express my gratitude to everybody who's watching here, and just the Town Council and the town of Southbridge itself, for giving me the opportunities it's able to give me, and overall, the education it's given me, and to hopefully pursue my dream to go into college, WPI. Thank you.
See? Future Town Counselor, maybe. All right. Our following student, Robert Sayes, resident of the town of Southbridge and student at Southbridge High School, received Quinn Sigman Community Colleges Hispanics Achieving and Celebrating Excellence Scholarship Award. Robert?
Hi, I just wanna say thank you to my dad, and he's my best friend, always been there, every day I needed him, every day that I struggled, he was there to pick me up. I wanna say thank you to my stepmother, who's also helped me with my grades, when, during the COVID year, freshman year, she helped me out, pushed me up to get my grades back up, and I just wanna say thank you to my family, for helping me get through it.
So important to thank our families, right? Families supporting our students, we love to see that. And finally, last but not least, Asier Garcia, resident of the town of Southbridge and student at Southbridge High School, who received the Quinn Sigman Community Colleges Hispanics Achieving and Celebrating Excellence Scholarship Award. See here? All right. We will hang on to this one and give it to Asier another time. Thank you, everyone, and another round of applause for our families, for our students. Thank you.
I'd like to thank the families for the support that you've provided, and if there's anything we can do moving forward with any of the boys or girls that have got these awards, we're here for you, and thank you very much.
Mr. Chairman, if I may?
What?
All too often, here in our community, on social media and people talking on the street, we talk about the bad that goes on in our community and our school system. This is a prime example of what we have developing in our school system, these young adults getting these awards and really making Southbridge what it is. And I just, again, wanna commend you all for your hard work that you do, and I look forward to, hopefully someday, if I'm still alive, being able to work with you and maybe in this position here. But we will insist on public speaking. Thank you.
Any other comments or conclusions? Thank you very much. We're moving on to Agenda Item Number Nine, Vote to Confirm the Town Manager's Appointment of Wilfred Canoia as interim assessor, who will also assist and help ensure the success of our new assessor for a period not to exceed six months. So moved.
Second.
Motion by Shenyer, seconded by Montigny. Discussion, this is Town Manager.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Through you to the Town Council, as you're aware, we've been trying to recruit an assessor, and we have an individual Jasmine in that office that we believe with training and mentoring will be successful in the assessor's role. As you're aware, I had previously brought forward Manny Silver, who was recommended to us by the former interim Town Manager, Charlie Blanchard, to serve in that role. And my experience over the last couple of months, part of the goal that I had communicated to Manny was the fact that we'd like to train and assist in the development of our staff there now, because we are not getting candidates to apply. And in the interim, I met up with Wil Canoia, who is here tonight, and asked him if he'd be interested in coming back in an interim role to help in the assessor's department. And after much conversation and dialogue back and forth about the pros and cons, and believe me, Wil had probably more cons than pros in regards to coming out of retirement to serve in this role. However, I expressed my desire, and I believe that the town's desire, to have somebody trained and developed in the role, and that could mentor Jasmine in that office. Jasmine is scheduled to attend the next series of training in February. That alone will not simply be enough to make sure that she's, it's just one step in that journey. And what happened, Wil here as a mentor, Wil had, in our conversations, Wil had hired Jasmine in that office and was very familiar with her, and really believes in her ability to do this position, and the goal would be to have Wil, in the next six months, work with Jasmine in transition in that office, and then I envision a role afterwards where he would continue to maybe come in and consult and mentor Jasmine, and that's the type of role that we need, his longtime history in the town of Southbridge. Not to mention that he brought up some information to me, the fact that we have to go out for an RFP for our revaluation services, so there's a lot of work that has to be done that he's intimately knowledgeable about in the town of Southbridge, and with that, I just felt it was a great opportunity for us to shift gears, bring Wil back. that, I just felt it was a great opportunity for us to shift gears, bring Will back. He'll be able to train Jasmine in how to write the RFP, what to look for, and really be that mentor. It would be on the same um pay and schedule as Manny uh would be. So one to maybe two days a week uh that he would be here, but he'd definitely be a resource. And like I communicated with Will, the fact that we have Dean here 24 hours a week, his hands, Dean's uh hands are full right now with the finance department and trying to get the budget information together. But Dean would be here for general questions that maybe uh on a day-to-day basis. So I strongly recommend the council confirm this appointment. And as you can see, the language in this agenda item was written by Will because he surely wants to ensure the success of our next assessor. So if you have any questions, Will is here.
Any question, councilor? Council Mike Eddy?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, through you. So Will's salary would be $100 an hour?
Yes, the same as Manny, yes.
And his duties would be to train Jasmine?
And serve as the assessor.
So he retired in 2021 and you haven't been able to train her since then or find anyone to take this position whatsoever?
Uh, we have posted for this position. We've had uh very uh no applicants or the applicants we've had have had no municipal experience. Jasmine applied for this job, has experience in the assessors department, however, is not, uh she needs some further training. So it is uh coming out of the assessors' salary line item. Jasmine is paid as her regular salary is now as we train her and then look to uh enhance that department. And the answer to the question is no, we are unable to find any qualified applicants at this time, and we have tried.
All right, thank you.
Any other discussion? Just a quick comment. This dilemma isn't just in Southbridge. It's across the state in Duncan, various people, uh assessors, town treasurers, accountants. Um, they're tough to find. So in some cases, if you're coaching up and you got a guy like Will Canoia, which we revert back to this agenda item, he's a role model assessor. But more important, he's a role model person. He's a good teacher. I think he's the right man for the job. And he was a hell of an offensive tackle when he played football. Mr. Canoia, would you like to say something?
Yeah, thank you. That's a very good summary uh by Mr. Town Manager of what my roles are. Just to summarize them again, I see three priorities right now uh for that department. The recertification, revaluation, which is state mandated once every five years. It's a massive project. And um I've been involved with I don't know how many, probably fif- not 15. It used to be every three years, now it's every five years, but I've probably done seven, eight, nine of them. But it's a massive project. And if you don't start it now, come next Ju- uh next December, it's not done. So I want to get that started. I want to stabilize the assessing department. I don't know what uh issues are going on, but there's a lot of uh state mandated things, a lot of programs that have to be done and they take months to complete and you stop them timely. And thirdly, as uh actually my highest priority is get the new assessor in place and allow that person to be successful. You've got a great candidate. When I hired her, when I was still working here, I could envision this because she's she's a very, very smart person, a very, very smart person. And I could see her filling this role back then. And I I think you, like with myself, it's a homegrown candidate candidate. I think you'd be very happy with and well-served with her. And as far as my role here, I want to be done as quickly as possible. Literally, I mean, Mr. Howley and I had that discussion. I don't know how many times I said it, but I'll say it again. I want to be done as quickly as possible.
Tom Brady.
And lastly, I want to I want to share something with you. In 1988, um I volunteered to fill a vacant position on the Board of Assessors. And although that's an elected position, it was a vacant position. Uh, somebody had resigned midterm. So the way that is filled, there was a joint meeting of the Board of Assessors and the town council in 1988. At that meeting, I I thought I was, you know, how many times do you have people competing for a volunteered position? Well, another candidate came forward. So we had to be debated, interviewed at a council meeting like this. At that meeting, there were two people there who were in this room right now and nobody else. The chairman of the town council was Scott Lazo, and I was the applicant or the volunteer. So it's funny how things come around again. But thank you, and I appreciate the consideration.
Thank you. Any questions of the candidate? Thank you very much, Will.
You're welcome.
If there's no further discussion, all those in favor, opposed, unanimous of all present. Moving on to 10, vote to approve the town manager's appointment of John A. Calcagni Jr. as a permanent full-time police officer for the town of Southbridge effective immediately, based on the police chief's recommendation, pending a successful completion of a medical screening and state ethics in good standing.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Ortiz, seconded by Shinja. Discussion?
Mr. Chairman, this was unanimously approved by the subcommittee on the 17th of January.
Thank you. Tim?
Uh, Mr. Chairman, uh, Mr. Calcagni is a former police officer in the town. Now I'll defer over to Deputy Chief Dinghy, who's filling in for the chief who is on vacation this week.
If I may, through the town council chair, John Calcagni Jr. First and foremost, he was born and raised in Southbridge, knows the community, went to Anna Maria and obtained a criminal justice degree. Um, we hired him back at in April of 11 of '22 and trained him and sent him to the academy in July of '22. We had no issues. Um, while he was here, he ended up resigning for another opportunity in August of '23. Um, timing's everything. We were hiring and uh he inquired about a couple of weeks ago that he wanted to come back. I think this is a no-brainer, no academy cost, no cost for training. We already trained him to be here. The only way this is possible is because of civil service. He could just get reinstated to the town. Uh, we'll tell you, we were going through the process of hiring uh possibly two, and both those candidates failed out because of physical fitness. So this is perfect timing where we could get a candidate on the road within a week or two.
Thank you. Any questions? If no questions, all those in favor, opposed, unanimous of all present. Mr. Calcagni, would you like to say a few words?
I appreciate you hiring me back. Um, and I can't wait to be working again for the town and serving. So, thank you.
We move on to agenda item number 11. Vote to approve the town manager's appointment of Jason Demaris as temporary steel plow operator as recommended by the DPW director, effective immediately, pending successful completion of pre-employment requirements and state ethics.
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Motion by Shinja, seconded by Ortiz. Discussion?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, through you. This evening, we had a meeting. Uh, it was four to zero, unanimous.
Unanimous of subcommittee recommendation. Any further discussion? If not, all those in favor, opposed, unanimous of all present. Moving on to 12, review and discuss the town manager's appointment of Peter Preventer Jr. as a maintenance man slash equipment operator, MM E.O., as recommended by the DPW director, effective immediately, pending successful completion of pre-employment requirements and state ethics.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Dow, seconded by Ortiz. Discussion?
Again, Mr. Chair, unanimous of all the individuals at DPW meeting.
Unanimous recommendation to subcommittee. Any further discussion? If not, all those in favor, opposed, unanimous of all present. Move on to 13, vote to approve the town manager's appointment of Arnold Bofor Sason to the planning board for the term to end on 6/30/26, pending successful completion of state ethics.
So moved.
Motion by Monteggi?
Second.
Seconded by Shinja. Discussion? Council Daniels?
Mr. Chair, this item was unanimously approved by the PND Subcommittee.
Subcommittee unanimously approved. Could I have Mr. Arnold come to the podium? Arnold, could you come up?
Before he speaks, if I could.
Go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, through you. We had two candidates that came forward for the planning board. Arnold's was the first uh application that we had and it was pending. We had another individual. Both had qualifications. Um, so what we did was we reviewed with the planning board chair to review both candidates. Both candidates equally opportunity. Arnold has been attending both town council meetings and planning board meetings. Um, both individuals, while one had a building experience, Mr. Arnold also had community development experience. So they both had strengths in both sides. I did speak to the other candidate and advised him my why I made the decision that I did to recommend. Uh, and he understands that. And if there's a future opening, we will consider him for that opening. But it was our recommendation to bring Arnold forward.
Are there any questions of Arnold? Council Monteggi?
Thank you. Uh, I just wanted the public to know, uh, Arnold, colleague of mine, we grew up uh going to the same Southbridge High School together. And uh he reached out over the summer and told us how great it is to be a Southbridge citizen, you know, here. And and he wanted to find an opening of any kind on a board or anything. And he's a very well-educated gentleman. And uh as as a kid, I'll say he's one of the first people to teach me anything that I knew about uh audio recording. So he is well-versed in many things. He has the Southbridge pride that uh we all wished that we had. And uh I'm happy to see that he found a place up here. Thank you.
Arnold, could you tell the public why you want to get involved, especially with the planning board? It's a very interesting board.
Oh, absolutely. Well, thank you, uh, the town councillors. So my interest actually started with uh, so I live right next to the YMCA and I figured, you know, these past few months, uh, we did some renovation just to improve the the aesthetics of the community. Um, and to be honest, uh, I planned I planned um on attending the planning board. And I found it really interesting because uh especially when we have like flood-prone areas and places where it's susceptible to uh, I guess, vulnerable populations. Um, that intrigued me because I've actually studied like MS4, our stormwater permit. Um, basically anything that um would bring us like to comply with state regulations, like I'm all for that. And I feel like I have a unique ability to help uh Southbridge uh get to that level or contribute at least. You know, I'm born and raised and pioneered forever. And I love this town and I want to serve to the best of my ability. And I absolutely look forward to it. Thank you.
Arnold, just one comment before we vote. I want you to know, Arnold, the gentleman that is sitting right in that front row, he got on the planning board when they invented it. That's how long he's been on the planning board. Any further discussion? If not, all those in favor, opposed, unanimous of all present. Congratulations, Arnold.
Congratulations.
Moving on to agenda item number 14, vote to approve the town manager's appointment of Ramon Arnold to the Trail Committee for the term to end on 6/30/26, pending successful completion of state ethics.
So moved.
Motion by Shinja, seconded by?
Second.
By Dow. Town manager?
Yes, uh, Mr. Arnold, I had served on the Trail Committee for four years, and I believe it was an oversight in the reappointment. He wishes to come back on the Trail Committee. And as you know, we have a lot of uh the rail trail moving forward. We have an agenda item later on for the Heritage Trail. So I would recommend that we fill that position.
Any discussion?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Real quick, uh, thanks to Town Manager for finding that because I was wondering if it was a reappointment. Obviously, it was just a series of errors. He's done a great job for the Trails Committee. Thank you.
Council Daniels?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Uh, the PND Subcommittee voted unanimously to approve this.
To approve unanimously by Subcommittee. Any further discussion? If not, all those in favor, opposed, unanimous of all present. Moving on to 15, vote to approve the town manager's appointment of Kevin Buxton to the Historical Commission for a term to end on 6/30/26, 2026, pending successful completion of state ethics.
So moved.
Second.
Is the motion second. Discussion? Council Daniels?
PND Subcommittee voted unanimously to move this forward as well.
Was there any unanimous to support it by Subcommittee? Council Mike Eddy?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, through you. Um, I don't have a problem supporting this. I just want to uh say to Mr. Buxton that um you you're already serving on two other committees. So it's important that you don't get on too many committees because you'll have a tendency to burn out. You do that. So I I wish you the best of luck. I'll support it. Just be careful about how many committees that you serve on. Thank you.
Any further discussion? If not, all those in favor, opposed, unanimous of all present. Moving on to 16, vote to accept the warrant for the special state primary on Tuesday, February 6th, 2024.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Shinja, seconded by Daniels. Discussion? If not, all those in favor, opposed, unanimous of all present. Moving on to 17, vote to approve the FY24 Emergency Management Performance Grant. An entertaining motion to recommend to the town that the town council accept an approximate grant funding for $5,980 and allow the town manager to sign all related paperwork.
So moved.
Motion by Shinja, seconded by Ortiz. Discussion?
Mr. Man- uh, Mr. Town, uh, Mr. Town. Mr. Chairman, this was voted unanimously by the Subcommittee on the 17th of January.
Unanimously, this was approved unanimously by Texas Property. Any further discussion? If not, all those in favor, opposed, unanimous of all present. Moving on to 18, vote to accept FY24 firefighter safety equipment grant in the approximate funding of $19,000 and allow the town manager to sign all related paperwork.
So moved.
Motion by Shinja, seconded by Dow. Council Shinja?
Again, this was approved by the Subcommittee on the 17th unanimously.
Unanimously voted Subcommittee's support. Any further discussion? If not, all those in favor, opposed, unanimous of all present. Moving on to 19, vote to approve the contract with Schoolhouse Construction Services, LLC, to provide housing rehabilitation specialist services for the FY2223 CDBG Housing Rehab Program and allow the town manager to sign any related paperwork.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Ortiz, seconded by Shinja. Council Daniels?
This motion, this item was unanimously approved to move forward to council.
Approved unanimously by Subcommittee. Further discussion? Council Mike Eddy?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, through you. Um, I don't recall us ever hiring an independent company to do this in the past. I know that I, one of my um in-laws, applied for this grant and it just went through the CDBG Department. Um, so this is for $95,000 from what I got in my packet. I didn't see that in the agenda. And I don't know if it needs to be on the agenda. I I would just think that we'd want to include the cost for this. Uh, also, the the funding for this, where would that come from? I did watch the meeting. It was a bad storm that night, so I couldn't make it in. But um, uh, there was $450,000 for nine homes. So that doesn't leave any funding for this this amount of money. So where would that be coming from?
Peggy Dean?
Hi, yes, thank you, councillors. Um, here on behalf of our CDBG coordinator, Katie Yoder. Uh, the, if you'll recall, the CDBG fiscal year 2223 grant application, uh, the funds that were outlined in that application included a housing rehab specialist. And if you recall, Council Mike Eddy, at that time, you asked, what is a house doctor? That's what we referred to them as. That is that housing rehab specialist.
Okay. And that's not, that's something that like the interim building inspector, he couldn't handle that type of work?
If I may, through you, Chair, um, this has been, uh, this was brought up at the meeting, how this is actually viewed as a conflict of interest. If you have your own building inspector inspecting, then consulting with the contractors on the work that's going to be done and then inspecting the work on the tail end.
Okay, but the interim inspector, he doesn't work for the town. He works for another town. So wouldn't that be, wouldn't that be allowed?
If I may, through you, Chair, our our building commissioner is is still signing our building permits representing the town. So we can't have someone colluding with contractors on work that then they're going to be approving, is how it would be seen as.
You know, I get that. You know, I get that. I'm just saying that the interim building commissioner does not work for the town. Well, he's, well, he's an interim. He's not even getting paid, but he lives in another town, so that wouldn't be a conflict, would it?
If I may, through you, Chair, he is hired to represent the town, if that sounds like semantics to me.
Okay, thank you.
Any further discussion? If not, all in favor? Opposed, unanimous, all present.
Thank you.
Thank you. Moving on to 20. Vote to apply for the 2024 Rebuilding American Infrastructure with Sustainability and Equity. Discretionary grant to reconstruct Hamilton Street for $7.9 million and allow the town manager to sign all related paperwork.
So moved.
Motion by Shinia, seconded by Ortiz. Councilor Adams? Let's go to your Subcommittee.
No.
Yes, my Subcommittee.
PND, I'm sorry. Councilor Daniels?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This motion, this item was unanimously approved to move forward.
Unanimously approved to move forward from Subcommittee. Any further discussion? Councilor Marquetti?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, through you. The last time we applied for this, didn't we apply for 10 million for this grant?
If I may, through you, Chair, yes, and I think we actually applied for more in the prior year to that. We've continued to refine the project, hone in on what the necessities are to be able to reduce the amount of the project. That helps our benefit cost analysis ratio overall, and obviously just general fiscal responsibility.
All right, thank you.
Any further discussion? Town manager?
I would just ask that anybody that attends the AO function on Thursday, maybe get an air to Congressman Dale and say, please support this program.
Any further discussion? Not all in favor? Opposed, unanimous, all present.
Thank you.
Moving on to 21. Vote to use of $750,000 in water and sewer enterprise funds towards the reconstruction of Hamilton Street should the town be awarded the 2024 Rebuilding American Infrastructure with Sustainability and Equity discretionary grant and allow the town manager to sign any and all related paperwork.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Ortiz, seconded by Shinia. Councilor Daniels?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This item was unanimously approved to move forward by Subcommittee.
Subcommittee unanimously approved. Any further discussion by Council? Not all in favor? Opposed, unanimous, all present. Moving on to 22. Vote to award water filtration facility polymer feed system upgrade to Dankers Builders Corp. for the base bid in alternatives, alternates, for $227,700 to be funded from account 4200 005800 0064536 WFP Polymer Station Upgrade.
So moved.
Motion by Shinia, seconded by?
Second.
Ari Ortiz? Go ahead, Councilor Adams.
Thank you, Mr. Town Manager, through you. That was unanimous as tonight, four to zero. Just wanted to mention on 33 and 34 of tonight's agenda will be the transfers to help fund all this as well. Thank you.
Any further discussion? If not, all in favor? Opposed, unanimous, all present. 23. Vote to apply for a 2024 Mass Trails Grant for up to $80,000 with a matching grant for up to $20,000 from an account to be determined and allow the town manager to sign any related paperwork.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Shinia, seconded by Councilor Dow, Councilor Daniels?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This item was also unanimously approved by Subcommittee to move forward to Council.
Any further discussion? Excuse me, Councilor Marquetti first, or the town manager?
Okay, thank you, Mr. Chairman, through you. I do like grants. However, I don't like matching grants. I've never cared for that. I've always thought, if you want to give me a grant, give me the grant, but don't ask me to contribute to it. $20,000 is a lot of money that we could use elsewhere. I see that this money here, from what I'm reading in the packet, is for engineering services. It's always my concern, when you have to engineer something like that, then you end up not having enough money left over to actually do the work. I'm not saying that that's what's going to happen, but that's always my concern, and then somebody will come back and ask for more money. I've been on the Heritage Trail. I walked down there one time. It just needs a good cleaning and a little repair work. So I'm all for cleaning it up, but again, I don't really like using town money for a grant. Thank you.
Any further discussion, Mr. Town Manager?
My understanding through the Subcommittee was that this would also provide funds for the repairs, and so engineering should be minimal in case we have to. There was much conversation about the trails and how that integrates. A lot of people use that trail. There was agreement that we should do some maintenance on that. I do understand Councilor Marquetti is concerned about matching grants, but sometimes you're better off spending 20 to get another 80. Otherwise, we wouldn't have it, and at some point, we're going to do those repairs. I'm all for saving as much money as we possibly can, if possible. The question will be, where do we get funds to do this? My recommendation would be to take it out of the Capital Stabilization Fund 0842, which currently has $705,563 in it as of January 11, according to the town account.
Any further discussion? Economic Development Director?
Yes, I just, I also wonder if it might be helpful to just zoom out to where the decision came from. This was brought up during the CDBG public hearing about how to use the leftover 20 and 2021 funds that remained. It was ultimately decided to use those funds for the Main Street 600-block playground. However, it was made known that people were interested in seeing that Heritage Trail repaired. And so then we talked about during the fiscal year 24 application, should we consider putting the request for funding for the Heritage Trail in the CDBG grant, which wouldn't require a match? However, we worked with the DPW, and we instead looked at how much of the roads can we get done with that money instead? And so if you're looking at, you know, where the costs, you know, come from, you know, would that $20,000 have otherwise been spent on the roads that we're now going to be able to cover under the CDBG grant? And when we choose our CDBG projects, we have a bucket, and we have to divide it in three. And to have a small project like that, to use up the money sometimes is harder for us. So there was the logic. And the Mass Trails Funds, we currently have a two-year Mass Trails Fund for the design of the rail trail. We typically cannot apply for a Mass Trails Grant while we have an existing grant. I called and asked, or I wrote an email asking if there's any exception to that, that we have this great trail. It's supposed to be ADA. We're really struggling to maintain it, and they said, yes, in this case, it could be eligible.
Councilor Marquetti?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The last thing I'd like to say is that we have a lot of projects out there that have been granted. The Henry Street Field, I'm still waiting for that to be finished. The flashing beacon lights at Charlton Street School, that hasn't been finished yet. So it would be nice if we could just finish one project before we move on to something else, but that's all I have. Thank you.
Councilor Dow?
Thank you, Chair, through you. I want to say thank you for Peg. She's doing a great job. Finish one project and start another is not an option, because there's a lot of things in Southridge to be done. So if we finish a project and we wait for a second, we wait, what, two years to get another grant? So I think she's doing a great job, back to back. No reason for us to stop anywhere. Move, move, move. Thank you. Tax, tax, tax.
Councilor Daniels?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, through you. I'd like to also thank Director Dean for the work she's done. She's bringing forward over $8 million worth of grants today, and she's working on them. I'll grant you that it takes some juggling to get it all done. However, you strike while the iron's hot. And if you're talking $8 million worth of grants and a $20,000 match out of $8 million plus, I'll take that anytime. So thank you, Director Dean, for the work that you're doing. We'll continue to push forward.
Councilor Shinia?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I supported this as a councillor, and the reason for that is I utilize that trail. And I think if councils took the effort and went down there and looked at that trail to see what it was like, we advertised this trail as being ADA compliant. And truthfully, if the American Disability Act people went down there, they would see that this trail is not. Some of the areas have a six, seven-inch missing material, because over the course of time, we didn't maintain it. I was on the Recreation Committee when we built, first built that trail, and it was excellent. It was beautiful. It was well-maintained. And then as budgets became tight, as employees became less, some of these projects were just put aside and not maintained. This is an opportunity to be able to fix that trail and have it all tie in with the trails that we're presently going to be, soon go out to bid for. Thank you.
Thank you.
Councilor Dow?
Thank you, through you. Just to continue, Councilor Marquetti, it's a grant. It's a free money from the state. Why not? So you give them a dollar, you get 100 back. I mean, it's, it's, it's great for the citizen, not tax, tax, tax. I would recommend you to go down and walk on that trail. It's good. Good view, natural, good to go out in the wood, and, you know, it's a beautiful. Try it. Thank you.
Any further discussion? I would just like to make a comment. Multitasking projects is only for people that know how to do that. Councilor Dow's in business, I'm in business, and people that are in business multitask. I'm on six sites. When we have Peg Dean, the Economic Development Director, I've observed her multitasking talents. It's unbelievable. I call it the Energizer Bunny style, when you can multitask and constantly have all the wheels turning at the same time. And I know we have to deal with seasonal construction, we have to do with deadlines and releases, but when you're a multitasking person, that's the one you want on your team. You want this to happen like this. I know, I can speak from my experience, Councilor Dow, you can't even find this guy. He's on, he's in so many places at so many times, but I admire that, because I'm the same guy. So when I see something like this, I say, this is an asset. We can do a lot of stuff in a short period of time, and that's why I'm going to be supporting this myself. Any further discussion? Town manager?
If just somebody would make a motion to amend so that we could put the funding mechanism in, fund 0842 capital stabilization in 20,000.
So moved.
Second.
Is the motion seconded to amend it? Discussion on the amendment? If there is no discussion, all in favor? Opposed? One opposed? Eight in favor of the amendment? The main motion has amended? All in favor? Opposed? Eight, one? Approved. Moving on to agenda item number 24. Vote, a police department transfer request of $5,000 from account 001210-511000. Salary wages to account 001210524100. Vehicles repair to cover any other unexpected expenses from the remainder of the fiscal year.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Shinia, seconded by Dow.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, this was recommended unanimously by the Subcommittee on the 17th. But I'd like to just, the gentleman that was up here tonight, he talked about transfers and holding off on transfers, and we had that discussion during the Subcommittee meeting with all the transfers, on the fire station, police station. And during that meeting, there was some comment made regarding that it wasn't necessary to stockpile, you know, building, I mean, like toiletries and papers and those kind of things. And we were assured by the fire chief and the police chief that these transfers were necessary to get them till the end of the year, and they were hoping that it would get them to the end of the year. And as the fire chief spoke, he talked how he sends the guys out to go look for the best deal on toilet paper at Big Y or Big Bunny and those kind of things. He talked about the repair to, the rescue truck, I believe, was $7,000 to fix the def system, which is part of the exhaust system. And the police chief talked about the necessary repairs that had to be done to a police group, I believe, the transmission and those kind of things, and those bills haven't been received yet. So it's not like we're taking these transfers and just stockpiling money because they're there to be able to be used. These are necessary transfers to get the department through the remainder of the year. And again, it was good discussion about this, but these transfers are not stockpiling any kind of stuff. These are getting things done that we need to do till the end of the year. Thank you.
Any further discussion by anybody else? Councilor Marquetti?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, through you. I have to agree with the citizen, Citizen Murray, he came up here and talked about the transfers. I understand if there's an emergency and you need the funds, but I would want to see some evidence that there's an emergency. Show me the bill. Show me your invoices. Show me something that shows me that you're missing all these things that you need to replace. Do a better job of budgeting, and if you have money left over, put it back into free cash. So I'm not going to support this. In fact, I'm not going to support any of these transfers. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman?
Town manager first.
Thank you. So having experience on multi-levels of government, from being a department head to being a town council, school committee chair, school committees, and now being town managers, it's very difficult when you do budgets that you, it's your best estimate on what you anticipate that you're going to spend in the year. And then you have other costs that come in, inflationary costs that you budgeted at a certain amount. You said, okay, this was last year's amount of supplies that I used. However, we had a 10% or 12% increase in X, Y, or Z. As a department head, I could have my best guess of what I believed my vehicle maintenance was going to be, and my cruiser blew an engine, and that was a $5,000 bill, I'm talking 20 years ago. That was unanticipated. I didn't think the engine was going to blow. So therefore, I had to find transfer, and I had to go somewhere else. These accounts, when they come to us, are not just a department head going to town council for a transfer. They're vetted. It goes from the department head with a specific reason, and the specific reason that's documented on these transfer slips came as a result of council and prior council, when I was the chairman of the council, going to these department heads and make sure you document why you're asking for this money. Then it goes to the finance department, and the finance department says, this is the amount of money. Then it has to come to me, the town manager, or the previous town manager, to say, why are you asking for this money? What is the reason you're asking for this money? And finally, it comes to council for approval. So it's going through multi-steps of why we're asking for these transfers. Unfortunately, we will not authorize a purchase order for a repair if there's no money in the count. So if something goes on a budget line item that says, I need to have this vehicle cruiser repaired or this engine repaired, and they want to submit a purchase order, if that's a zero balance tomorrow, you're waiting for a town council meeting for two weeks by the time it goes through Subcommittee and all that. I understand that we have tight budgetary constraints, and we're doing the best we can to make sure that we live within our means. But we have a day-to-day operation that we have to do, and that's why we have transfer policies, as frustrating as they can be. However, there has to be a very good reason why you're coming to us for a transfer. And there's a whole host of other issues. In my whole career in the town of Southridge, we've all talked about transfers when it was on school committee. Why do I have to go to school committee for transfers? Why do I have to go to town council for transfers? Then we have the department heads that come in before council, and we've all been there, where they say, I've asked you for $3,000, but you cut me and leveled funded me to 1,500. And all along, it goes, well, if you need the money later on, find the money within your budget and transfer it. There's got to be a better way. We are working with our budget people, but these are all vetted. It's desperately needed, and nobody's asking for money just to spend on a willy-nilly spending spree. It's needed items on a daily basis to run these departments till the rest of the fiscal year. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, thank you.
Go ahead.
You know, it's disheartening to come up here to council meetings, go to Subcommittee meetings, and have our department heads that we've hired to be the professional to run those departments and maintain the budgets, when we have counselor comes up here and say, prove it to me. Show me. I want to see it. I believe when that department head comes to a subcommittee meeting, pleads his case, council goes with it or without it, and his reputation is online by stating what his needs are. And it's totally, I believe, wrong for council to make that indication that, to say that, I don't trust them. Bring it here. Let me see it. I don't believe it. It sends bad vibes out to the community that we're trying to cover up something, when this department heads and the public safety, the police chief, fire chief, any department head comes before council and states their case, why they need the transfer. And, and this needs to stop. This is a constant thing that goes on within the council and, and this mistrust needs to stop. Thank you.
Counselor Dow.
Thank you, Chair, through you. Thank you, Counselor Shinja. You read my mind. Uh, Counselor Marcarri, uh, you're a good counselor. You're being here more before I being probably in the United States, let's say that way. I'm not sure what's going on lately. Uh, I don't like, you know, we got along good. I don't like to keep commenting on, on your, on your, uh, answer all the time. It don't make no sense. If we don't trust our head department, police department and fire department, we shouldn't let them work in the town. Uh, we went to the meeting, they explained, they're not asking for more money. They have the money already in, in their budget. They just transfer it from account to account. So I'm not sure where's the big deal in here. Like, everything is, is, you, you make it seem like you're defending, uh, the money of the citizen and we're sitting here and we give it away. I, I don't think it's right. We all care about the citizen. I live in the town. We all live in the town. We all pay tax. We all love Southbridge. We all want the best for Southbridge. I don't think we, uh, don't wish the best for Southbridge the way you, you do. So I think we, we need to look at it a different way and, and try to make a better comment in the future. Thank you.
I'm going to take a second here, um, listening to the counselors. I, I, I'm going to go out on a limb here. I don't think Counselor Marcarri's wrong. I don't think that citizen was wrong. I don't think Joe Dow was wrong, and I don't think Counselor Shinja was wrong. Accountability and oversight is tiers of government and democracy. It's the counselors that sit in a chair above the manager, and there are department heads that have their role. The thing is, when you talk about, the, the buzzwords are always accountability and oversight. Well, I think that's what this gentleman is doing, is accountability and oversight in his opinion. And he's entitled to his opinion. Uh, as we go forward, I was always the guy that believed trust and verify. And I'll tell you what, in the last few years I've been on council, I came in with this new manager and I says, I'm not marrying any department heads. We trust and we verify. The reason why we have the transfer policy, our town manager brings it up, because it was a department head that, there was some interesting stuff done on a forklift. There was a drone project under etc. There were some things that department heads have done in the past that have raised our ears and raised our eyes, opened them up and said, why did you do that? It wasn't in the budget. So going forward, I thought, as Jan, uh, excuse me, as the town manager has said, he vets it. And, and I trust people to an extent. But then at the end of the year, if we have a fire sale, transfers, I'm going to have a problem. But when I ask a police chief in the subcommittee, how much money, is there any money left in that account? In two weeks, there'll be no money in that account. Now I'm concerned. Now I'm voting to transfer. But if there is thirty thousand dollars in that account, you want to put another twenty on top of it, then I got a problem. Counselor Marcarri's right. So the balance is the manager, the department heads, and then ultimately the town council. There's nothing wrong with asking the questions. And you can disagree respectfully. But the bottom line comes down to is, the transfer policy was put in there, and a lot of people don't like it, but it exposes where the money's going. It shows you the transfer. Why are you moving it? Town manager says we have to move it because we had a breakdown. It's just simple accountability. It's nothing to get angry over. It's nothing to point fingers over. It's part of government. And sometimes it's not really clean. Sometimes a little dirty. But that's okay. We'll get through it. That's budgeting. It's nailing jello on a tree. You really don't know if everything's going to go right. Just keep that in the back of our mind as we move forward. Any other discussion on this, on the, on, on this agenda item? If not, all those in favor? In favor? Opposed?
Mr. Chairman.
One opposed, eight in one. Moving on to agenda item number twenty-five. Vote a police department transfer request for twelve thousand dollars from account zero-zero-one-two-one-zero-five-one-one-zero-zero-zero. Salary and wages to account zero-zero-one-two-one-zero-five-four-eight-zero-zero-zero. Motor vehicles, parts, and accessories to cover any other unexpected expenses for the remainder of the fiscal year.
So moved.
Motion by Ortiz, seconded by Shinja. Discussion? We must state to the agenda item.
So the agenda item being a transfer, um, all I'm asking for is for you to consider, is it a critical need? Can we do better? Recognize that these particular items come up habitually year after year. And in the budgeting process, let's be more transparent. If our leaders need additional money for this line item, they should have it in that line item and be transparent for that line item. They shouldn't have a budget that says, well, we can't do salary at X, I need Y, but it's at X. So we're going to take it from L to pay for it. Um, our department heads work hard. In fact, I even had a conversation with one in the parking lot in between coming up there. It was a very good conversation. Um, I support them. They're creative. They're talented. But let's look at this going forward because our budgeting from the state is going to be more difficult and more challenging. So let's just get it right. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Shinja, had you any, any handle?
No.
Is there a recommendation?
Recommendation unanimously by the subcommittee on the seventeenth of January.
Recommendation was unanimous by PPP. Discussion? Any further discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? Unanimous of all present?
One opposed.
One opposed. Moving on to twenty-six. Vote a police department transfer request of five hundred dollars from account zero-zero-one-two-one-zero-five-one-one-zero-zero-zero. Salary and wages to account zero-zero-one-two-one-zero-five-seven-one-zero-zero-zero. Mileage to cover costs of mileage reimbursement, tolls, and other fees for officers mandated training.
So moved.
Motion by Ortiz, seconded by Shinja.
This was approved by the subcommittee unanimously on January seventeenth.
Any further discussion? Not all in favor? Opposed? Unanimous of all present? One opposed? I'm sorry, eight, eight to nine. Eight to one, which would make nine. Moving on to twenty-seven. Vote a, vote a police department transfer request of fifteen hundred dollars from account zero-zero-one-two-one-zero-dash-five-one-one-zero-zero-zero. Salary and wages to account zero-zero-one-two-one-zero-five-five-eight-seven-zero-zero. Parts and accessories, non-vehicle to cover repair costs of the police department, Polaris utility, terrain vehicle.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Ortiz, seconded by Shinja.
This was unanimously approved by the subcommittee on the seventeenth of January.
Any discussion? Not all in favor? Opposed? Eight to one in favor. Moving on to twenty-eight. Vote to accept a donation of five thousand dollars to the police department from United Lands to be used at the discretion of the police chief.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Ortiz, seconded by Shinja.
This was unanimously approved by the subcommittee on the seventeenth of January.
Any further discussion? Not all in favor? Opposed? Unanimous of all present? Moving on to twenty-nine. Vote, vote a fire department transfer for ten thousand dollars from account zero-zero-one-two-two-zero-five-eight-five-six-zero-zero. Safety equipment, safety equipment to account zero-zero-one-two, ooh, that mind got blurred now, two-zero-five-two-four-one-zero-zero. Motor vehicle repair, maintenance to cover the costs of additional repairs required to maintain vehicles for the fiscal year.
So moved.
Second. Again, this one was unanimously approved by the subcommittee on the seventeenth of January.
Motion by Ortiz, seconded by Shinja. Unanimous of subcommittee recommended to council. Any further discussion? If not, all those in favor? Opposed? Unanimous of all present? Up. Eight to one. One opposed. Motion passes. Moving on to thirty. Vote fire department transfer request of two thousand dollars from account zero-zero-one-two-two-zero-five-one-nine-three-zero-zero. Tuition to account zero-zero-one-two-two-zero-five-two-four-one-zero-zero. Motor vehicle repair, maintenance to cover the cost of additional repairs required to maintain vehicles for the fiscal year.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Ortiz, seconded by Shinja.
This was unanimously approved by the subcommittee on the seventeenth of January.
Unanimous recommendation from subcommittee? Any further discussion? If not, all those in favor? Opposed? Eight to one. Motion passes. Moving on to thirty-one. Vote a fire department transfer request of five hundred dollars from account zero-zero-one-two-two-zero-five-four-six-zero-zero-zero. Building grounds and material to account number zero-zero-one-two-two-zero-five-four-five-zero-zero-zero. Janitorial housekeeping to cover the rising costs of janitorial supplies for the fiscal year.
So moved.
Motion by Shinja, seconded by Ortiz.
This was unanimously approved by the subcommittee on the seventeenth of January.
Recommendation unanimous, the subcommittee. Further discussion? If none, all those in favor? Opposed? Eight to one. Motion passes. Moving on to thirty-two. Vote a town manager's transfer request of a thousand dollars from account zero-zero-one-one-two-three-five-seven-three-zero-zero-zero. Dues and subscriptions to account zero-zero-one-one-two-three-five-three-four-one-zero-zero. Advertising and promotions to cover advertising costs associated with public hearings and, but bids. Give your motion.
So moved.
Motion by Counselor Montigny, seconded by Counselor Shinja. Mr. Town Manager?
Thank you through you. We had communicated with Counselor Montigny. This was the only item that we would have had for general gov, subcommittee. Um, he offered to allow it to go up directly to council. Uh, the most difficult thing when it comes to the town manager's office, I wasn't here when we built a budget. Um, we have a lot of bids that are going out that have to be advertised for, public hearings. That all comes out of the town manager's office, advertising and promotions. Under dues and subscriptions, under contract, under my contract, I have the right to, uh, pay dues to the International uh, Managers Association for yearly dues. That costs approximately twelve hundred dollars to the town. I'm foregoing it for this fiscal year because of, uh, where we're at in this fiscal year and, uh, we need to do this. So I'm taking the money out of my dues and subscriptions. That's part of my contract in order to fund, uh, this advertising and promotions to get us through the rest of the fiscal year.
Discussion? No further discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? Unanimous of all present? Moving on to thirty-three. Vote a Department of Public Works water department transfer request for eleven thousand two hundred dollars from account four-two-zero-zero-zero-five-three-zero-zero-zero-six-four-five-three-six. WFP polymer station upgrade engineering to account four-two-zero-zero-zero-five-eight-zero-zero-zero-six-four-five-three-six. WFP polymer station upgrades construction to fund water filtration facility, polymer feed system upgrade.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Ortiz, seconded by Shinja. Counsel Adams?
Mr. Chair, through you. Uh, again, four to zero this evening at our DPW meeting. In favor of?
Favorable by subcommittee. Any further discussion? Counselor Marcarri.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, through you. Um, I did have some concerns about this whole project because it was, it was over, there was more money being spent on this than what even the tie-in bond, uh, recommended. But after talking to the town manager, I understand why, uh, this needs to be done. We did set the money aside last year for two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand. Part of it was, went to engineering. Part of it is for construction. So I understand the need to have it done, and I understand why, uh, these other things that are added to it, alternate one and two, why it's a good, good idea to have those done at the same time. The only thing is, going forward, when you have something like that, alternate one, alternate two, I would like to have a copy of what exactly alternate one and alternate two are all about. And it was nothing in my packet, uh, regarding that. I did, there were some comments at the subcommittee made, meeting about it, but I will support it. Thank you.
Any further discussion? If not, all in favor? Opposed? Unanimous of all present? Moving on to thirty-four. Vote a Department of Public Works water department transfer request for sixteen thousand five hundred dollars from account six-one-zero-four-five-zero-five-eight-three-zero-zero-zero-zero-nine-one-two-five. Water Capital Reserve to account four-two-zero-zero-zero-five-eight-zero-zero-zero-six-four-five-three-six. WFP polymer station upgrade construction to fund water filtration facility, polymer feed system upgrade.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Ortiz, seconded by Dow. Any discussion?
Unanimous of all present, um, at the DPW meeting.
DPW unanimous recommendation. Any further discussion? Not all in favor? Opposed? Unanimous of all present? Moving on to thirty-five. Vote a Department of Public Works water department transfer request for thirty-eight thousand two hundred and fifty-four dollars from account six-one-zero-four-five-zero-five-eight-three-zero-zero-nine-one-two-five-zero. Water Capital Reserve to account six-one-zero-four-five-zero-five-eight-three-zero-zero-zero to four-five-eight-zero. Water, water systems capital to cover costs associated with the emergency water main break that occurred on eleven, twelve, twenty, twenty-three.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Ortiz, seconded by Counselor Dow. Counsel Adams?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This is unanimous to bring up here, uh, this evening. Uh, Mr. Gregoire gave an a great explanation to see why we're having to pay for this at this point in time and, and if, if the council, I don't know if Steve's, Steve's still there? See him all the way. There you go. He gave a great explanation. It wasn't the vehicle that did this. It had to do with a old antiquated system that was down there and, and, uh, actually broke with a rock when they were compressing it. So, thank you.
Mr. Town Manager?
Uh, through you. Question came up whether auto insurance would pay for it. We will explore that option. Uh, worst case is the auto insurance carrier will say no, uh, but we will pursue that and put a claim through their insurance carrier just to see if they will pay for that.
Any further discussion? Counselor Marcarri.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, through you. So now this is a transfer that is an emergency, and I have no problem with, when there is an emergency. So I will support it. Thank you.
Any further discussion? Counsel Reavis?
Um, just a quick question. Um, I wasn't able to make the meeting before we came here. Um, are there, will any of these transfer monies help to sort of, um, create a mitigation plan in case that happens again, or?
Take your name and address.
Uh, good evening. So, does your question mean to eliminate water main breaks in the future, or?
Obviously not. We can't eliminate them. But, um, will any of this transfer money help to sort of maybe create a plan or something that might help, like mitigate if that happens in the future?
So, we, we budget a hundred thousand dollars every year just for this purpose. Um, it's part of DEP's requirement that we have a fund just for emergencies. Um, and it's, it's pretty been, been a flat number for, since I've been here, of a hundred thousand dollars per year. Um, it was, obviously this fits directly into the, that, that purpose. It was three water main breaks within five hours, uh, after a car accident. So, we, we do have a plan going forward as far, it, it's kind of joined in with the pavement management plan as far as main- management plan as far as main replacements, identifying 100-year-old plus water mains. And hopefully, we can replace some of those before these emergencies happen. Obviously, we've got 90-some-odd miles of main in town, but we are looking to get on those as time allows and money allows. I think Crane Street's actually next on the list, which is right, Crane and Cross is right where the river is, right where one of the breaks was. So, this money will just fund this work, but we do budget for this thing in the future to mitigate the risk of impacting the budget. Really, we wouldn't have to come for extra money in the budget because it's already in the budget.
So, just a follow-up question to that through you. So will we expect to see maybe a little more in the budget for next year? Just considering that we had these, I don't know, are these typical?
Yeah, some years, we don't use the money. Some years, we do. Right now, we're only using about 50% of what's available and we're only five months left of the fiscal year. So I think we're on track, that our planning kind of fits. And obviously, if we raise that reserve account, it's going to raise the budget. And that's something we don't want to do. Everybody's very sensitive about the budget and I am as well. So.
Thank you. Thank you.
That's what's nice about you living in town.
My town.
Any other discussion? Any of the councilors? If not, all in favor? Opposed? Unanimous of all present? Moving on to councilors' forum. Counselor Rivas?
Thank you. So I wanted to just share a little bit from the MMA conference that we attended this past weekend. I was encouraged to hear about the municipal relief package that the governor has proposed in the new budget and hoping that, you know, we get some relief for our seniors. There is something in the packet where it will allow municipalities to create some, you know, tax relief for people based on certain requirements. And certainly, I don't have all the details, but we heard a little bit from the governor and lieutenant governor around that this weekend. Certainly, anything that helps our residents and, you know, certainly our seniors who are in fixed incomes and give them any relief on their taxes would be extremely helpful. It was good to hear about monies coming to our communities for infrastructure and other money to help our communities around the Student Opportunity Act in the budget. And so hopefully, that will increase some of that funding so that it becomes less of a burden on our communities. So those were encouraging things. I did want to address one of our votes earlier on that we were talking about the trails by West Street. And I went to one of the workshops that talked about building thriving business districts in our community. It's encouraging to see and hear that a lot of the recommendations that were talked about in this workshop, PEGDEAN is doing in our community and working to create a walkable downtown, diversifying our economic uses. Trails are part of that. There was a lot of conversation around different communities that they use as examples that have turned around their business district because of all of these different priorities and working with private and public partnerships, prioritizing people. Our historic district, you know, that one initiative that the Historical Commission is putting together around the wayfinding. That was also another piece that they talked about, wayfinding being really important. And infrastructure improvements, all of the things that we've been working on in these last few years are part of all of the things that the professionals are recommending to make our business district more thriving. So I do think that we are on the right track and it was great to have that sense of reinforcing the work that PEGDEAN does every single day. So I just wanted to share that. I also wanted to share, we heard from the MIA, MIIA, our insurance carrier, I just wanted to share for our town employees, when we went to their booth, they talked about some one-on-one coaching and a lot of different wellness initiatives that are available to our employees, including our teachers, at no cost. And the one-on-one coaching was particularly interesting because people can get up to like 10 sessions. I thought it was really important, especially in this, you know, climate around a lot of mental health, that people really need wellness and mental health help in all of our different sectors. It's something that can help us attract and keep our employees and help our employees in our community, you know, with any needs that they might have. So I don't know if the town manager wanted to add a little bit about that, but I thought that was a great service that is offered to our employees, including our teachers. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Dow?
Thank you, Chair, through you. I just want to say thank you for all the employee, for the DPW, for the great job they're doing with that cold weather, keeping the road safe and sidewalk for our citizens. Thank you. That's all.
Counselor Shinia?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Thank you. I'd just like to let the people know that during the budget process, the department heads under the former intern town manager brought their budget requests to them and they were told to cut the different line items so they would bring a balanced budget to council. And the words that we learned through the course of the year was that the department heads came for transfers early on this year for some items and they told us the reason why, that the town manager, the intern town manager said, "Cut it and come to council for transfers." So, you know, I got to kind of defend them a little bit on their request. I want to thank Counselor Rivas and Counselor Daniels and Town Manager Jovan for allowing me to be part of their tag-along team this weekend at the MMA conference. I learned a lot of things. We had some good motivation speakers and one of them was to deal with conflict resolution and stuff. So I guess I got to reread that tonight because I lacked it. I want to apologize to Counselor Marquetti for maybe raising my voice. Again, I know his intent, as all the other councilors are, to do what's best for the community. And I kind of got a little hot tonight and I'll have to read that material over again. Thank you.
Counselor Shinia? As Counselor Adams always said, there's nothing wrong with a little passion in politics. Counselor Montigny?
I have nothing tonight. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Counselor Adams?
Thank you for the quote, Mr. Chair. Just, I can't believe the town manager on his comments was talking about his hairstyle and getting it taken care of. I could not believe that. But anyways, I've been waiting all night for that one, but I want to wish Abby nothing but the best in the near future and where she's going to. I understand and I don't blame her for making that decision, benefit for her own life. And she's been a valuable asset to this town with through ARPA funds and making sure I'm on track of everything and as well as providing the contracts to the individuals or organizations in which those funds go to. It's really helped out quite a few people in this town and organizations. So I'm very proud of that and I thank the Committee as always, but Abby was great and we're going to miss her here. So I wish her nothing but the best in the near future. That's all I've got.
Counselor Adams, I think we could help out the town manager with our hairstylist. Save a lot of money.
You're totally out of water. The end of a few words. Counselor Ortiz?
I have nothing tonight. Thank you.
Counselor Daniels?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, through you. First off, I'd like to congratulate the students tonight, personally congratulate them for their honors. It's nice to see excellence being rewarded. As it's often said, the youth are our future and it's nice to know that, you know, we really do have a good future ahead of us. In particular, I was impressed by one of the students who was saying that they hope to get into WPI and I say, "Reach for the stars. You never know what you're going to catch." That's excellent. I did, as other councilors alluded to, go to the MMA conference over the past weekend. We saw the governor and lieutenant governor speak. We saw the Speaker of the House and we saw the Senate President. And they had some nice things to say, but if you listen closely, there were some things that I found a little bit concerning. Correct me if I'm wrong, fellow councilors, but did they not, was it not announced that there'd be a $400 million appropriation over two years for Chapter 90?
$400 million, correct.
Which means that for one year, it's $200 million, which means nothing has changed.
Correct.
And nothing has changed for the last 10 to 12 years. So we're being level funded, but we're being told that it's over two years instead of one. So yippee, that's really good. The roads in town need work. We need help in getting them done and once again, we're not getting it done. Something else that came up in a different context was that some people are talking about the fact that in the future, owing to the necessity to staff our positions and the fact that there are very few people that are applying for these positions anymore, we may need to consider regionalization. And I'm not saying that's something that's going to happen this year or next year. Please, don't get me wrong. But in the future, three to five years maybe down the road, it may be an issue that we have to address. So just to hear that being said, just made me sit back and take notice. We like to, we like to think that we can control our own destiny and have local people in these positions and, you know, have a quote-unquote "local" say in how things are going. But if hiring conditions continue the way they're going, in the future, it may not be an option anymore. And that's just something that we need to possibly consider moving into the future. On a different level, the food was great. The merchandise was wonderful. Good job, Counselor. So it was a good, it was a good weekend. And I encourage councilors that haven't been in a while or councilors that haven't been yet to consider going next year. There's a lot of networking that goes on, a lot of good people that you meet and there's a lot of ideas that come up. And the seminars, the individual seminars, there was work both Friday and Saturday and there were seminars to attend as well as hearing the keynote speakers. Really, really is a valuable experience. And barring unforeseen circumstances, I plan on going again. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Counselor Marquetti?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. First of all, I just want to respond to Counselor Shinia. George, you and I go back a long ways and we've had some tougher fights than this tonight, so don't worry about it. I also would like to thank Citizen Murray for coming up here tonight. I like to see residents come up to the lectern and speak their mind about issues that they're concerned about. You don't see that every day, so I actually respect what you had to say. I know you and I don't see eye to eye on national politics, but we're absolutely one and the same on local politics. So thank you very much for coming forward. I also wanted to say that there were a lot of comments on social media this, over the weekend, about the curbside. I tried to convince people that I thought it was a really good deal and they should try and stick with it, don't give up on it because, as was pointed out at the meeting, it's probably the least expensive of all the systems around here for curbside garbage collection. There were a lot of questions about why this, why that. I tried to answer them the best I could. I think it's important to get that educational material out to the residents as soon as possible. I know in the seller contract, it was supposed to go out 45 days in advance of the start of the curbside. And I think people really want to know exactly how is this going to work? How can they opt out? What do they have to do to either opt in, opt out? And so as soon as we can get that educational material out to the residents, I think would be the, would be better. So, thank you. Yeah, I'm all set. Thank you.
If I could just respond to that. I was very brief in the curbside. The conversation that I did have with Anna and Marissa today, they're putting together the script. They're going to do a cable access presentation as well. So they are really working diligently on getting as much information together so that we can start really pushing this information forward. So, thank you for that.
Thank you.
Agenda item number 17, discuss next meeting date. Vice Chairman?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The next meeting is Monday, February 12, 2024, 7:00 p.m. in the council chambers. Thank you.
Agenda item number 38, adjournment. Do I add a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
By Daniels, seconded by Shinia. All those in favor? Opposed? Thank you very much. Meeting adjourned.